Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, May 27. Audra, can you have the record show that our city attorneys present, our city planners present, our city engineers absent? We have council member Dunlap, Gady and Tanner present. At this time, council member Lund is not here. And we have our city administrator. At this time, I'll ask her to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item this evening is our open forum. This is the portion where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to three minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Right, we will close the open forum. Audra, can you have the record show that our city engineer is present now? And we will move on to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time? Adam?
Mayor, council staff would request to add item 6.2 to accept a resignation from a city employee.
Madam Mayor?
That's right.
I'd also like to bring down 3.3 from the consent agenda. We can make that 5.1. And then, I would also like to reverse the order of 4.1 and 4.2 so that we're discussing waterfront first. That's the way that the Planning Commission did it. I think it's less confusing to do it that way.
Do you have any issues? Okay.
With that, I will move to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
There's a motion by Ryan and seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We will move on to item, the new item 4.1, which is the Atsigo waterfront. Now, I will turn this over to Dan.
Before I give the planning report, just for Mr. Greniger and for Mr. Pratt, your applications were just approved on the consent agenda. So you guys are all set.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Note, the application from Modern Construction in Minnesota. They've submitted a planned unit development, development stage plan, a preliminary plat of one lot and three outlots, and also consideration of vacation and of drainage and utility easements. This is a reconsideration of an application submitted and approved in 2023 that was expired because they did not move forward with final plat approval as required by the zoning ordinance. So they've submitted revised plans for the development addressing prior concerns, representing it for consideration. The property is guided by the Conference of Plan for Mixed Uses, which consists of commercial, office, or service retail businesses, along with opportunity for multiple family dwellings, along with the property that exists as two lots currently, plus an outlot, which is entirely within Wild Scenic Recreational River District, protecting land adjacent to the Mississippi River. This is located east of Highway 101 at County Road 39, just south of the Atsigo Waterfront Development and Nathan 101 Market. The preliminary plat would re-subdivide the property into, again, the one buildable lot as well as two outlots, including the Wild Scenic Protected Parcel, as well as an outlot that's currently within the Floodway District of the Mississippi River. Can't be developed until the developer is working on a process with the Army Corps of Engineers to allow that area to be filled. So they're primarily doing this for the purpose of developing Lot 1 Block 1. Prior application included completion of a traffic study showing that the intersection at Quantrell Avenue and 90th Street could accommodate a significantly larger development than what's currently being proposed without any additional improvements to that intersection. Sewer and water utilities are available to the property, but the development does require an improvement to the existing lift station in the area, which would be a developer responsibility. And then they provided stormwater plans for the development, meeting the city's MPCA requirements. Because the two lots were previously platted, there were drainage and utility easements dedicated when those lots were subdivided. Those would be vacated when this property comes into the final platted, similar to the preliminary plat that's shown. And then finally, with any subdivision application that includes public improvements, there's a requirement at final plat for a development contract to be executed. The revised site plan, shown as the architectural drawing. The principal building has been changed to 135 apartments and 12,800 square feet of commercial. Prior proposal included restaurant. This is only retailer, office, or service type business within that square footage. Setbacks for the development would be similar to what was proposed previously, moving the building forward towards Quantrell Avenue to try and maximize the developable area within the property, given the wild and scenic limitations on the outlot to the east. The properties or the buildings also setback approximately 20 feet from the north property line. The one issue with that is we do need documentation from the architect that with the fire lane that's provided is adequate based on the construction of the building. One of the items discussed at length with the prior application was provision of off-street parking. What's shown on the screen is 352 parking spaces shown, which includes 65 spaces within the building. The recommendation from the Planning Commission would use a methodology to calculate a mixed-use parking requirement for 309 uses or 309 spaces, basically looking at the offset peak demand for each of the uses within the building, not necessarily just a cumulative total for this many apartments and this much commercial space. How that breaks down is 188 surface parking stalls. There's also the need to increase the enclosed space to 121 stalls. Pedestrian access to the site would be available on Quantrell Avenue. And there's also an opportunity to create a pedestrian connection to the east through the outlots up to Carrick's Landing. That would be defined in terms of its location and timing at final plat pending the resolution of the Floodway application. Landscaping and exterior lighting plans would also need to be submitted at final plat approval as we don't have those at this time. The building plans have changed, reducing the overall structure by a story. It's now a six-foot or a six-story building. That's five stories usable space above the parking enclosure. The commercial component is now at grade to the south of the residential building or the parking garage, essentially. The height of the building is 70 feet or six stories. That's less than was proposed previously, and it's within the 75 feet that the Planning Commission is recommending for this area under what's proposed as the M1 mixed-use district. So the Planning Commission was supportive of the proposed height of the building. Looking at the construction of the building, these are to be commercial-type structures requiring 65% glass or masonry finishes. This plan only has 32% grading materials, so that obviously needs to be modified and increased as part of the final plat submission. One of the other issues with the prior submission was that the apartments within the building didn't meet the minimum floor area per minute requirements that are specified by the zoning ordinance. The revised plan meets all of those requirements. And then they are showing some signs on the architectural plans. City staff's recommendation would be just to apply the standard allowance for wall signs on all four sides of the building up to 15% of the wall area with a maximum size of 200 square feet per bill or per sign, as this is within the freeway corridor district. City staff is recommending approval based on consistency with the Conference of Plans, zoning ordinance, and subdivision ordinance. Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the application at their meeting last Monday. They recommended approval subject to the 18 conditions recommended by city staff.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to comment?
Good evening, council. Jesse Hartung, 18837 Ogden Street Northwest, Elk River. No further comments. I would say that looking for support tonight with the approval of the 18 conditions listed. And I stand for questions if you have any.
Thank you. If you want to stay there, you can. Council questions for the applicant or for staff regarding this application?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan?
Mr. Hartung, at the Planning Commission, I think you said that there were three conditions that the council talked about last time, and that all three of those were resolved. Can you just go through what those three conditions were and how they were resolved?
Sure. So the letter that I received for the denial on the last application was the unit sizes, where I believe we had some one bedrooms that didn't meet. Those have been resolved, as Dan indicated. We've decreased the size to meet all the stipulations. The second denial was for the parking. And under the mixed-use district and staff recommendation, we've met that parking on-site now without any street parking. I do recognize some of that still says proof of parking, however, at the planning commission, I said that was just, it was intended to be what was required by the city there. So that's been met. And then the building height was the other issue. And so now we are under that proposed mixed-use building height of 75 feet. And so therefore, we believe we've met all the, all the stipulations for why we were denied last time.
But under the, so I want to make sure I'm understanding. Under the current ordinances, you would not be meeting parking or building height, correct?
And my understanding is with the PUD, I don't know if there is a specific building height ordinance. I guess I'd leave that to city staff to comment on. As far as parking goes, we, we do have no space on-site to meet the existing parking requirements, as I understand it, but I had deferred to my, my architect team on that. However, we recommended to follow the mixed-use guidelines and therefore, you know, going along with the recommendation on the, on the 309 parking stalls, I believe it was.
And can I ask a question to follow up with that? Is that okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I was doing math in my head.
So I was also here the evening when you were here for the Planning Commission. And there was also discussion about you having 65 stalls currently in the building now, but you need 121. You did say you'd be able to figure that out. What?
Correct.
I guess I'm struggling with that one, since the picture is the same as what it was last week. What, what would you be changing on this, which would ultimately change the design of this building?
Yeah, so we would beat the stipulation as meeting 121 covered, so we'd extend the parking garage area to meet the additional stalls required by the city code or by their approval of planning commission and both of the approval of city council tonight.
Would that change then, where you were planning to put your retail space to the south then? That was going to be a one?
That would still stay there. So the only thing we would be doing is increasing the covered parking spot. So the retail would most likely move a little bit further south to accommodate additional parking garage stalls.
So would that ultimately be changing what I'm looking at? That, that would change what I'm looking at tonight?
It, it would modify what you see here to accommodate the stalls, but the structure above parking would all stay the same. The square footages of the commercial would all stay the same. And the, the proximity of the commercial relating to the apartments would all stay the same. And we would, of course, have that submitted prior to final plat approval.
Follow-up on that. Also, exterior finishes, you're at 32%. You need to be 65%. What would your?
We, we would, we would meet that.
Madam Mayor, quick question.
Yeah.
Just to confirm, I, I think I read in the previous application that was brought up as an issue, as was the setback.
Correct.
I guess this is a question for the planner and the attorney. When we're looking at applications, we're looking at what they're presenting, and usually the drawing is complete, but we're, and I, I get that. This is not the final, but what discretion do we have? To, can we request that it be what we are expecting to see? So we, I mean, it does change if we're shifting everything to the south, as Mr. Hartung just said, the picture does change. The space requirements for outside and inside, I know he's showing that he has 309 spots, but we are, that's item 4.2 now is the mixed use where we're changing parking. So it feels like we're applying some old stuff, looking at new stuff. And to me, the picture isn't what we are ultimately going to be building there.
So mayor, in the Planned Unit Development District, the site plan and the building plans ultimately become part of the agreement between the city and the developer. So to the issues regarding the parking, the building materials, other items that are all listed in those conditions, either the council is comfortable approving the application subject to those conditions or requiring that certain conditions that you have issues with or concerns about be addressed before you improve the, this development stage plan subject to conditions. They do still have to submit revised plans that come back with the final plat. But it's just a matter of when you want to see that before you ultimately give approvals.
Other questions?
What? Oh, I was just going to add on to that, Madam Mayor, that that's what I struggle with here is because I don't like denying applications, but I feel like the council at this point has the most discretion to state what we think this should be in order to follow ordinances or variances to those ordinances. And so that's why I tend to look at this like we're some of this stuff is being repeated. I mean, at the last, the last time we reviewed this application, a lot of this stuff was the same.
Other comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a question, I guess, for, for maybe Ron. When we do a traffic study like we did here, what does that all entail? I mean, does it entail future projections and?
Yeah, so what they, what they looked at before was a complete build-out of the entire area. They looked at the comparison to what the development was proposed to be before versus what is being added at a higher level, and then made sure that the level of service at the intersection of 90th Street and Quantrell still met the level of service that the city requires.
Do you know offhand what the what, what was proposed for that area originally?
We had two lots that were industrial or commercial, commercial, commercial. And now it's, it's one apartment complex with some retail.
Mayor, the traffic study looked at the original concept plan that Modern Construction proposed, which was 400 and some apartments plus, I believe it was close to 30,000 square feet of commercial. So that was evaluated for the most intense possible development of this site. And then it took into consideration the undeveloped portions of Atsigo Waterfront North of 90th Street.
Okay, thank you. I guess, um, I kind of feel the same way. I would like, I'd feel more comfortable seeing the changes on here incorporated in the drawing or, you know, supporting it.
Yes. Madam Mayor? Yes. Can I ask a couple of questions? Absolutely. So your short 60 stalls in the parking garage, is that correct?
Mayor? So there is no PUD requirement. The Planned Unit Development is a custom zoning district that's based on the existing requirements in the ordinance. The city has been very clear throughout this process that they wanted one off-street parking stall per dwelling unit enclosed. That's been the standard that the other buildings have all been held to. That's what's intended to be added as part of the M1 district. So that's been clear all along. The exterior materials, we've been clear too, that those needed to meet the commercial standards, because what is designated as a mixed-use district is intended to be commercial zoning that allows for apartments. What it is basically. So anytime that you get into trying to do a planned unit development, you're doing something outside the boundaries of the existing ordinance. Otherwise, this would be zone R7, the building height would be four stories, and you'd have your brick requirement, your parking requirement, et cetera. So there are give and takes when you're doing a planned unit development district, and it's much more complicated than just doing straight zoning. So yes, the city commonly will approve plaits and other developments subject to multiple conditions, including changes to architecture, changes to the site plan, et cetera. We're trying to do this project as the same time as the city was trying to define the PUD or the M1 zoning district. And the reason we were trying to do that before having this come back was because this project had come forward, the one on the Richard LaFave project had come forward. We had interest in multiple family on the west side of the city, all of which ran into concerns about various elements, because we were trying to just do them on a case-by-case basis. So the intent was to try and set the global standard and then have this move forward. Now, this project generally does meet the M1 district requirements to provide, tweak the parking, fix the building materials, adding glass and brick, et cetera. So it can move forward. And that's part of the reasons why, when we set the agenda, we had the M1 district first to set the global picture, then deal with this one. But ultimately, because this doesn't necessarily fit into a zoning district that exists, the city council is basically making a judgment, and we have the most discretion as this. So your options are approve it with conditions, table it, request that the conditions we made, the city attorney and I were consulting on the 60-day rule, and we do have time yet within the city's allowed review period for that, or deny the request based on non-compliance, or just non-compliance with the intent of the Conference of Plan and the zoning ordinance. Staff's recommendation would be either approve it with conditions or table it. There's no reason to go to the step to deny it, yet give the developer an opportunity to respond if that's the direction you would prefer to go.
Madam Mayor? So I guess that was going to be my question is denial would mean they would have to come back similar to what happened last year, which is a four-fifths vote to say something has significantly changed, correct? A denial lasts for a period of time.
I think the issue would be is if then the city adopted the M1 district, they wouldn't be applying for a planned unit development any longer. They'd be applying for preliminary plat, site and building plan review, and a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
So would that extend out that timeline?
It'd essentially be an all-new application. The city would have another 120 days. We're almost to the end of the initial 60 days, so the city can extend that to August 5th at this point.
When I asked the questions, just about the 32 and going up 65%, just I wasn't picking on that. I just was pointing that out that and asking for clarification on that. I don't deny that you can put in larger windows and more brick, like that's not the question. But adding additional parking that was covered, it seemed as though that was a little bit of a surprise last week when, when it got brought up and the planning commission was talking about it, and you're like, oh, we'll just add it. So to me, I, I guess anticipated that you would have taken something, talked to your architect, submitted it to staff, and then the mayor pack it and look different. This is no different than last week with those comments. So and I but, but we wouldn't be tabling it under the M1. We would be tabling it requesting changes to the drawing and what you're going to actually be building.
Different.
So that, so that's the difference. It wouldn't be tabling it under an M1. M1 is the next item. So just so you're clear on that. Madam Mayor? Yeah, I have a few more questions. So I wasn't involved previously, obviously, being newer to the council. So just trying to understand the information that we had provided as a city of staff back to these guys, we indicated previously in regards to the one stall per unit. And, but we didn't get the updated plans from, correct? That show that.
Mayor, so the previous application approved in 2023 had a much larger enclosed parking structure that was to serve both the residential and the commercial. It would have met the one stall per unit, so the plan changed. And I was just looking back, the 2023 approval listed 17 conditions, which included the proof of parking issue and the exterior building materials, along with a number of these other things. So.
Madam Mayor, I would just say that that's my issue is that this was not a Memorial Day weekend thing. This was a two-year, the, the exterior materials. This was a two-year, the, the exterior materials, the setback requirements, the parking, you know, it's been two years, not a weekend, that, that, that there was an opportunity to change the plans to do that.
It's not as easy to add parking in this situation. It's, you know, it's about sixty grand per stall if it's underground. Sixty, sixty stalls. Yeah. So I have a question. If we approve with conditions today, just a question. And he comes back with revised plan, where is he bringing that plan to? Is that for billing permit and that's the opportunity, somebody has a chance to step in and correct things? Or is it prior to that, is there another review after this?
Mayor, because this is a plat as well as a planned unit development, the application initially comes back to staff for review, recommendation to the city council on the final plat, the final P U D development plans and the development contract. Council can always also refer a final plat back to the planning commission if there are issues within that, that you feel that there aren't there for the review as well.
So I have a question for you. If, if you, if. Once you get an approval, that means you can go get the financing you need to fund these other activities in order to support the redesign and the additional, like soil borings and stuff like that. Okay.
Mayor, just to be clear, that the discretion level is reduced if you approve it subject to conditions. You'd have to deny it based on finding that they're not meeting the specific conditions.
And.
Right.
Mayor, that's right. I do get a little nervous if I'm being frank, because I don't think we have an agreement on when the conditions are being met. I think that's. That concerns me. All the conditions that are listed right now? No, no, because I don't agree with all the conditions. I can answer that very easily for you, meet the ordinance. Yes, it's going to be the parking requirements, it's going to be the building height requirements, it's going to be the setback requirements. And the other stuff that I, I understand are easy to change, like the grading, you know, that kind of stuff, but. They do not. I think that would be accurate, but I don't know. I, 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 so you're trying to, you're trying to project into the future. I don't know what the M one district looks like yet. So let me ask you this. You understand if you had submitted a plan to us that met all of our ordinances, we could not deny it. You know that. I mean, isn't that accurate?
Okay.
Mayor, again, it's because it's a planned unit development, there isn't necessarily a yes or no black and white framework to work on in reviewing this application. That's the point of having the M one district in place. I believe if the M one district were approved as written and recommended by the council or a planning commission, the site plan, the site and building plans would still need to be revised to address the building materials, the off-street parking and the setback on the north property.
And the underground and the enclosed, so it's, oh, right. Madam Mayor, I have a question, another question. So is this typical procedures when a project is brought forward or a development is brought forward and there's conditions that need to be met? That the next review period, if approved, the next review period is the opportunity to say yea or nay and, and have them go back to the drawing board if they're not meeting the conditions. If we do a conditional approval today for the next step to be them meeting all the criteria that eighteen, nineteen, seventeen, whatever number it is that you've written out. I did review some of those, it makes sense from what I can tell. But, um, I guess, is this normal, is this typical?
Mayor, so with the plan due to develop now is the point at which the first decision is this an acceptable land use. There are details that may need to be resolved, landscaping plan, exterior lighting, plus building materials, off-street parking, et cetera. But this is the chance to say yes or no to the overall concept. If you approve it subject to conditions, then the council is limited by future action to the scope of those conditions. So does the building have sixty-five percent glass masonry material? Are there a hundred and twenty-one interior parking stalls and three hundred and nine parking stalls overall, et cetera? So can't then in the future look at it and say, you know what, I just don't like this concept at all, so.
Which, to his point, the three pieces for our denial that he sent his architect, we had to base it on what was approved the first time.
Correct.
We are not looking at that application anymore, that one has changed, this is what we're looking at. We have the most discretion tonight. You, but I'm, what I mean is you've changed, this is not the same apartment building that you submitted that's last time. Yes, so I, I guess that's what I'm meaning, it's not the same picture.
It's a new application. It's a, it stands separate from the prior actions.
That's what I guess I was saying, it's totally new. It's like the first time we're looking at it, is the way we need to be looking at this and not judging it from the previous one that we need to be looking at.
Attorney. Attorney, would you agree with his interpretation or?
Mayor, my understanding is the previous application was denied, so it doesn't set any precedent, this is a new application. Can judge it on merit. So now, of course, he can take that, this is a P U D application, so there's discussion about what the council wants to see and what the developer wants to see and there's give and take there. So he can take that as guidance on what he thinks the council wants to see, but the council is not bound by anything that he submitted previously because it was not approved.
And council member Donald, that's the struggle I've been trying to articulate, is that there isn't clear guidance under the P U D, right? And so the only guidance I had was my writ formal denial, which we believe we've corrected based on all the feedback.
I think the, the.
Would you approve the plan?
The problem with trying to answer that is we don't, we don't know yet.
I don't think it's also fair that we have to answer that, we are just.
I'm not demanding you to, I'm just asking if you guys, because how would I, you know, you guys are asking me or it sounds like suggesting I should update the plans. But there's, what assurances are there that you guys even agree with the project? I think there is some responsibility on the council's behalf to let a developer know. Mr. Hartson, we understand there's these eight conditions, we still don't think it fits, we still don't think this is the right project for these reasons. Otherwise, how can anybody get any development done in the city? And so I think it's a fair question.
Plenty of development happening. Council brigade.
Yes. It's not that I don't see this as a fit in this area. I, I liked your concept previously myself. There were other disputes, but the fact of the matter is, I, I just, I feel like, yes, this is a brand-new application. I'm, I am concerned with the parking, I know with the, I should say, the enclosed covered parking, you know, we're, we've got what, sixty-five within currently and you've got to get to a hundred and twenty-one. Is that viable? I mean, I'm a visual person, I need to see something, I just, I mean, I know you're telling me it is, but are, what are we going to lose from that? Are we losing anything with this concept or with that parking addition?
The only thing that would be changing as part of the condition, which would be, I would be bound by to the city for further approval, is that all the units stay the same, right? Everything else stays the same, the commercial space, everything stays the same. I have to extend the parking garage to get those stalls. And so the logical spot is you extend those and you just cover the surface spots, right? So that's the plan.
But, but then that, that would mean your commercial needs to go above the parking, so it does.
No, the commercial would just move south, Mayor. So it'd still be street-level commercial as presented.
So now it's going to come out even farther. So when I'm looking at this gray hatch line, that becomes, everything just moves south.
The commercial portion would move south.
And the other covered parking would be underneath that, because this, this commercial is in front of your apartments.
Correct.
Yeah.
So it would still stay in front of that.
So we're going to have covered parking and then in front of that is commercial. So some people park in the flat part and then some people are underneath the apartments.
No, it would just be one big covered parking garage. And so basically, what you can.
But see again, I'm a visual person, so that's what I'm not understanding. If you, if you turn the picture, explain to me what it's going to look like.
Yes, we can, I don't know the best way to do that for you, but I'd be happy to show you the portion that would just move south.
And you have the drawing, yes.
There's a section out there, Mayor, that's they move.
So this picture right here, you're, you're telling me this is going to move south and this roofline would be covered.
Correct, this would move out and then these people would have decks above that. Where the white area is, that just extends, everything else stays the same.
Extends outward?
Correct.
Comes to the south.
Comes to the south.
By, by how many, by how many?
The required stalls, so the sixty.
So that creates, oh, that creates two rows inside, what does that mean? Like, I'm just asking, you're, you're the developer, not me.
It, it would, I'd have to pull the plans up to see how many per row, but it would actually afford balconies for that, that level there too as well, so.
Mayor, probably at least be sixty-four feet because twenty-foot deep stalls, twenty-four-foot wide drive out.
It would likely bring the parking structure back to where it was previously, because I believe we had roughly that amount stalls previously.
And you wouldn't put the commercial then above it with your stairs like you had before?
Well, that, that would block the units on that level. And in council member Joe, I much, I much preferred the previous plan, but unfortunately that, we couldn't get approval over the building heights and so then that, that required a redesign that, again, makes the project viable as it stands. I will certainly be bringing back, assuming this gets approved, a phase two that has a lot of the stuff that phase one didn't get approved. You know, for phase two and hopefully phase three, but it's, it's an extremely nice project, in my opinion. We've got high-quality living, lots of it, and different varieties from studios all the way to three bedrooms. We're bringing twelve thousand square feet of commercial. We're going to try to get the river completely back to the city to be, or back from within the wild and scenic floodway so that we can develop that as a park and bring all kinds of amenities. But it's been a battle for three years and I don't think, you know, you guys obviously understand that and I've been here and there just isn't a lot of cleared. So again, I'm just trying to understand what would the council approve and if, and why not this with the conditions?
So then my question to you is why not present a picture of exactly what it's supposed to look like?
Because I haven't had declared. And so I'm, originally we had that, we had presented something that was, I think, eighty-one feet, which is going to be six feet over what the M one district allowed.
Right, but if you kept the same building and showed us a picture exactly what this looks like, why is that not an option then?
It, it.
I'm just asking, I mean, you keep asking us questions when I'm asking it of you.
So that certainly is an option. Again, it will require me to go back and redesign it, which will take time, we'll have to resubmit it through planning commission, which will take time. And then I'll have to come back to you guys. And so now we're talking about maybe a build a year after, right? Maybe we don't get in this winter. It delays all the other pieces that this is a prerequisite for.
But wouldn't you see this as, so you, we put the stipulations you then submit as a picture as it comes to final plat? The council can send it back to planning commission and you're back to where you were before, had you just submitted what you wanted to build the first time.
Correct, however, everything else would have moved forward in the process and if there's still a concern over, I, I guess my question, Mayor, is what, what I fail to understand is if we provide the covered parking spaces, are you guys going to come back and say you don't like how it looks? I, I guess I'm just not understanding where the disconnect is and, and shifting the parking garage and enlarging it. Because if it meets the requirements under the M one, why would it be denied down the road?
Well, it wouldn't be denied if you're meeting, I, I guess I look back, I look, I look back at the other apartment buildings that have been built in the city. We just haven't faced what we've faced with this project before.
Respectfully to them, they're boring, right? I mean, they're boring apartments, it's nice apartments, but respectfully, they haven't broken ground on a mixed-use development, they did apartments, right? This is a community area, they're not building a park that's going to be a two to five million dollar park development. You know, they're, they did apartments. And that's not what we've ever tried to present to you guys, I've tried to present a regional hub and a destination to you with commercial amenities that are both public and private, build out a park system which has to be phased to, because who in their right mind would make the kind of investments? Nobody would make the investments I've already made. Build out a park system which has to be phased to because who in their right mind would make the kind of investments? Nobody would make the investments I've already made. Additional investments to develop this. And we have submitted previously. You've seen all the part concepts.
Yeah.
We've done a lot of due diligence on all of this. So I'm a hundred percent committed to this project. I'm asking for city council, after all these years, to understand there's a couple of conditions that we can easily meet. And if those conditions are meet met, why would it be denied down the road? And so why not move forward with it now?
Shifting gears, I have one other question. What is your, you know, before it was, you're gonna be a restaurant. We had the upstairs, which I'm not supposed to be referring back to that because we're looking at this. What is your anticipation for commercial here?
It, what the market brings. I mean, I'm still evaluating the restaurant. Obviously, I can come back and, you know, submit that through the city if that makes sense, but it's what the market would allow and what the market's looking for. I've got a number of clients who wish not to be, made public at this point.
Okay.
Perhaps that final plot approval or after approval will know about them.
Sure.
That wanna be in a project that's got those kind of amenities.
Then how does that sort of stop you? How does that change then if one of them is a restaurant? Because.
So, mayor, they'd have to apply for a development stage plan amendment to basically, recalculate the parking with a restaurant in there and demonstrate that there's sufficient to meet the ordinance requirement.
And, and again, that's no different than any other restaurant that comes and says, hey, I'd like to put a restaurant here, right? You guys will vet that process if and when it comes. Um, it, it, you know, it's a bummer. I did have to pull those out of there, you know, but we made a commitment to downtown Elk River with a new location. Um, I'd love to bring a restaurant here. I wanted to bring the rooftop restaurant, but, you know, and I fully intend to bring those in phase two. This project will be a wild success. The demand will be through the roof. And then we'll come back and we'll ask the council for phase two to prove some more amenities and some, hopefully with the M one district, we won't have such un- unknowns here, right? We can move forward with phase two, but as it sits right now, again, council, I, I'm, asking you guys to understand the trials and tribulations of a small local developer and support that as small government is supposed to do and as, everybody says they do. Understand, I'm fully in support of meeting those criteria. It's not uncommon to have a plan approved with conditions, which this plan had previously been approved with conditions. And allow me to go forward and let this project move forward and bring it back to you. There's nothing that says you can't. If I don't meet those requirements, there's nothing that says you can't deny it then.
And mayor, can, can you clarify, you said the, I can't read the plan because the text is too dark, but I believe there is still a sky lounge.
There is a sky lounge on this. We are bringing some rooftop amenities for the tenants. This will be the only rooftop amenities, I think, in twenty or thirty miles. But that, they have to be private because of fire code. We, we don't have the ability to get the second actus up there and different things like that, so. Yeah, people renting and living. Paris and we'll have garden plots and everything up there as well.
I thought that was the sky lounge, but I can't read it. Mister Harding, um, can you speak to a little bit about phase two, a little about your plans?
Sure. Yeah, so the grand, the grand's plan was to develop on this site, you know, through a number of phases and, through a series of phases and I'm getting doubled there, but through a series of phases is ultimately have a hotel, couple of restaurants, anywhere between thirty and sixty thousand square feet of commercial. Huge public plaza. The park development will have docks, gazebos, public and private amenities. And, um, really create a regional destination, you know, for something that you would see similar to, uh, I would say St. Louis Park's West End, similar to, kind of what they're doing in Champlin, but that's sort of a little bit more sparse and not as well consolidated, sim- very similar to like a Stillwater downtown area. And so that's the goal long-term. Um, I brought some pretty bold and grand visions and ideas for phase one. However, to make those economically feasible, we need to be one story higher and we couldn't, we weren't able to overcome that. And so, phase one has to be a little scaled back and then in phase two, that will allow, um, additional amenities be brought to the city.
So that would be like, future construction and like another building and.
Correct.
So you, you must own quite a bit of land in there.
It's in total roughly fourteen acres.
Oh.
And so the plan is to do a couple of different phases and continue to build on and lease out space and add amenities as we go.
How many other developments have you, have you done?
Uh, I've done, I've done a number, so I've got over twenty years' experience in construction, um, including, small single families to multimillion dollar homes. I've done multifamily developments. Um, in Minneapolis, we've done row homes, uh, high-end. I didn't mean row home sounds low-end, but very high-end row homes right in the heart of northeast. I've done, smaller single-family developments in Zimmerman and Big Lake. I did a six and a half million dollar project in St. Michael, single-family development. This will be my first mixed use. I've bought and, bought and remodeled commercial real estate and residential real estate.
Okay.
But this will be my first mixed use project. But I'm partnering with Bauer Design Build. I mean, I will have a large-scale, well-known, respected general contractor running the project.
Um, just a quick question. You know, we have kind of the same sort of thing in Elk River. And there, and that commercial, which everybody thought would take off. Um, what, what can you say to convince me that this commercial will take off more than that did?
Well, you're talking downtown Elk River. Yeah. And so, you know, Tipsy on Main is now downtown Elk River, so we know downtown quite well. I've proposed a project like this downtown a number of years ago. Um, downtown, you know, it struggles from a, it, it's all private land, right? But it's all individual private owners is the biggest struggle there. And the city of Elk River has spent, I don't know how many tens of thousands on, many studies in my time in Elk River. I think I've seen three of these now and none of it's really come to fruition, but this project being private run, allows and being one big, right, like fourteen acres, you know, multiple phases being private run. Um, that's where the big difference is. You don't have to deal with a ton of different individual owners that have their own ideas and their own stuff and their own financial abilities, to be able to bring this to life, so.
Because I picked, I picture this as, I don't know if it's an apartment building there on the corner that has all of the, you know, like, commercial stuff on the base of it.
Granite Shores.
Yeah, I was like, weren't you proud of it?
I'm quite familiar with that. I, I lived in Granite Shores for a period there. My office, my construction office was in Granite Shores. I remodeled, a good portion of Granite Shores for tenants down there. Um, the idea is there, but it just, it's very hard. I think for Elk River to do much of anything, even their most recent plan that they released, it, it says left and right, up and down. It's all requires private, partnership with private landowners. I, if I've learned anything, it's impossible to get everybody on the same page.
Cause I would, I would have thought that would have really taken off there and I've always been surprised that, you know, you didn't see little shops in there and boutiques and all that.
Yeah, I, you'll see it here. With the city's council support here, you will see it here one hundred percent. Let's develop something that's got world-class amenities that attracts people, not just from the city of Atsego, but brings all that, uh, financial, um, incentive and that, you know, all that economic development from residents that are traveling many miles to come here.
Well, for me, I mean, the, the thing that catches my eye is not so much the apartments. It would be the commercial stuff. But, but, I guess I, I'm not convinced if it didn't work there, it's not gonna work here, you know, what, you know, and you can't, I know you can't tell the future if it's gonna make it or not, but I.
Yeah. I, I think not having a street cutting right through there is a big deal, right? They've got two streets cutting through there, a train, which causes a lot of headaches and issues. They've got some parking issues there, but more perceived where in the winter, you don't wanna park in the big parking lot and walk all the way down and get a coffee, right? So, what this project's designed around is a lot of places that I've been visiting, spent time into, like the mountain villages and, Telluride, Colorado, things like downtown Disney. If you've been to downtown Disney, you really gotta get people parked and then they can walk around and they can enjoy everything. They can enjoy a cocktail. They can enjoy a nice dinner. They can enjoy some shopping and, having the hotels a big component of it, having the people living there to support those small businesses. Downtown's got sixty-four units, I think it is, at Granite Shores. And then there's, I think, twenty-five or twenty-seven across the street, but you really have to bring in a, higher-income demographic to be able to support those local shops and stuff, and that's the intent here too. But, um, I think the biggest takeaway is amenities and then, get to the site, get out of your car and be, have, have access to all that, right? And so we've got parking, covered parking here. Phase two will bring a parking structure. Um, and in addition, we're still gonna do our car share program that nobody seems to believe in for the tenants, and we're gonna bring all kinds of, other great public amenities here, but, um, you gotta get them there and have them have a reason to get there. Whereas downtown, you got streets to cross, you got, you got a perceived traffic issue down there, right? I mean, people just say that it's, it's a headache. I'm not going down there. You got the train you gotta deal with. So, it's a challenge for downtown Elk River. And then everybody under the sun has their own idea of what to do with their own property, which makes it tough too.
I, I can tell you, I like the concept, the idea that the part I struggle with is the parking. And in the future, I know you had the, um, had the traffic study done. Thank you for that. I wasn't on council these past four years, but, um, I will say, I, I understand what, um, the other council members are saying. I've worked in engineering for a long time. And as much as I would say, and I was a drafter, if I could say, yeah, I'm gonna do this and write it down, my engineers would have said, get out of here. I mean, they, they, they're visual. A lot of people are until, you know, you see something on paper in front of you. I mean, I, I can see why they'd have a hard time signing off on it.
Hey, and I, again, I guess I'm just trying to clarify, we're just extending the parking garage here, right? And so, you know, from the standpoint of that's the biggest change to the footprint, right? I think everything else is just some cosmetic stuff. We're just extending the parking garage. I fully intend to meet the code. Um, and, and if it's really, we're not, if we're not here to determine if the project looks good or not, right, or we like the way it lays out, right? I don't think that's the council's job. I think it's the council's job to make sure it adheres to the, codes, right? And if the code says, Jesse, you need a hundred and twenty-one spots, and I'm saying, we will absolutely have that for you, council. Please understand that. Um, and, and again, recognize we're sort of in between a lot of different things. I know Dan commented that, the city's always had this one-to-one ratio for apartments, right? Um, but we've always presented under a PUD and a mixed-use development. So I, I apologize if I wasn't clear on that, Dan, but I didn't, my team had never seen that anywhere, the documentation, but, regardless, that's all the past, right? I'm just asking if we can please move forward, knowing we'll meet every one of those eighteen conditions, which, which, besides those change to the parking structure, doesn't, you know, which I would argue that isn't really a material change, but then why would it be denied down the road? And so if that's the case, why are we denying it now? Or why wouldn't we deny it now? Not saying that it's being denied.
I hear your points and I, I think they're, they're, they're good points in, in a way. Our job role is also make sure the businesses that come into this community are successful. Cause if you're not successful, you walk away from your property and then the city's left dealing with it. So, there is a responsibility to make sure that this is gonna be a successful project for the community, not just for you, but, I mean, obviously, we want all businesses that come into this community to be successful, but it's also, how is it gonna function? Is it gonna perform the way it's nee- it needs to? Otherwise, right now vacant land is more valuable than a building that doesn't work.
Sure, council member. Um, I would just, I would just push back and say, obviously, I'm trusting a team of architects. We've done our market studies multiples, including one by HUD. Uh, we've also done a market study by HUD, which is much more stringent. I've been in business for over twenty years since I got out of the military and multiple different fronts, right? Construction, residential, uh, commercial, and, uh, restaurant, right? And so, um, you know, changing and adding the sixty stalls is not, I don't believe a determination on whether or not it's successful. Adding the sixty stalls will meet the city code requirements and, um, respectfully, I don't think the city can deny something based on they don't think it'll work, right? How many projects, if the city was doing that, how many projects would be denied because we don't think it's a good business, but.
What is the AMI then?
AMI.
Or what is the, it's housing that you're building, right?
We're gonna apply through a HUD loan under the green energy program or the green building program, correct? And I've worked with Burkadia, one of the largest HUD lenders in the nation, that submitted our concept narrative.
And how many units are gonna be HUD compliant?
Well, the entire project's HUD compliant under the commercial application. Yeah. So it's not, it's, we're not doing low-income, type of housing. No, it's not TIP or low-income HUD. It's not affordability. It's a, it's a market rate HUD financed under their green building side of things.
Okay. You could totally all look like, wait, we haven't heard this. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was thinking it was affordable.
No, 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 my goal is to bring market rate, um, high-end, uh, uh, high-end units.
So it's, it's a financing option that they offer you as a developer?
Correct. Yep. We've been through the entire concept.
What do you call it? Green?
It's their green building program.
Yeah, it's, it's for housing that does, um, they perform projects. They have to meet a number of criterias, which is, exterior envelope, they have to meet an en- energy code, really high standards between heating and, um, electrical usage. Um, a lot of those things. I'm working on one of those projects right now personally, or with my career, uh, being in construction, so.
Okay.
Um, yeah, but that's an affordable project.
Yeah, it's still the same requirements, very stringent. They also require vetted property management companies with years of HUD experience, so, um, again, as I've commented in the past, building this high, this high, I believe builds a safer project because of some of the tougher building codes you have to, you have to meet. Um, in the same respect with the HUD financing, it brings in a much more stringent, uh, due diligence on the financial piece of it. And that will be coming, you know, you'll have the HUD pre-approval as part of the, as part of the final approval. So, to the point of making sure it's successful, you know, and, and I'm happy to share market studies with the city. We provided parking study for the city. Like the M one districts being based on, we provided all of our geotechnical engineer. Um, I'm happy to share the market studies for the city too. There's a huge demand and a growing demand in this area to provide high-level housing. And, and I believe this project fits that and would attract new residents, uh, to the city to support all businesses.
So when you say affordable, uh, oh no, not affordable, but, um, high-level housing, but you said it's market rate, so.
So we're on the high end of the market rates. We'll be, we'll be coming in at the top end of the market rate.
Okay.
But we'll be delivering the top, the nicest units and the mo- the most amenities, especially as we develop out that park area, and bring additional space. And where else can you go where you can live somewhere and walk down and shop there, right? You know, and, as we continue to develop and have a hotel and multiple restaurants on site, it'll, it'll be a destination place.
I will comment, I did appreciate that you do have some three-bedroom options. Um, that was nice to see.
Thank, thank you, mayor.
Yeah. I think that will be a, a, that you aside.
It's, it's unfortunate that we're turning into a rental nation as a custom home builder for twenty, over twenty years, but, that is kind of where we're going and, uh, there is a huge demand for it. The market study done by HUD was even better than the private one, which we were all shocked at, my finance team and all of us, so. This area is in high demand and it's bringing a, an affluent base, you know, that are looking to move out of the cities, but, um, you know, with that comes the need to have bigger units, nicer units, amenities, things like that.
Their comments. Questions for Jesse, questions for staff?
Yeah, here. I just, I just wanna make a, a comment. I get a little concerned, um, Jesse, when you men- mentioned, you know, something like the, the West End, in St. Louis Park. I've been there. Um, I know a lot of places I've come and go and I just, I just wanna make sure that, what you're thinking of bringing in here is gonna be successful because as Michelle stated, it's, yes, you wanna be successful, but us as a city and not having vacated buildings or anything left because it can happen. I just wanna make sure that, you know, you're thinking of the best of the best to bring in here and it does, and it is successful. Um, I know there's no guarantee, of course, but I'm just, I, I always get concerned when you say shopping and this and that. I, what kind of shopping? A lot of stores are closing because we're all on, Amazon or whatnot. So I'm just, I get a little concerned. I definitely want commercial in here. I'm not saying, no, not at all. Absolutely, we need it, but just to be cautious when thinking of what you're gonna be bringing in.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the big pieces of phase one, not going too big, right? I mean, it is twelve thousand square feet, which affords the opportunity for a lot of, small and medium-sized businesses and a lot of service-related businesses. Um, I, again, I, I can't speak publicly, but I already have probably eighty percent of that leased out. You know, again, that, nothing's signed until we get approval to get further along, but I know a lot of business colleagues in this area that, that want to be in a place like this. Um, and so, phase one sort of proves the point. We'll bring that back to you guys. It'll be a huge success in bringing a lot of tax base for the city. And then in phase two, we'll continue to expand on that and then, you know, the, the system sort of feeds itself as it gets to be a destination place, right, where, more people wanna live there because now they can just walk downstairs and get food and shopping and all that stuff, so. Um, yeah, it, but the market always usually finds a way. And I agree, so west, the West End in St. Louis Park was, it, it came out with a huge bang. It kind of stumbled for a while, but when, when it did become successful is when they started to get enough apartments there to support it. Now you see how many apartments around that. We're certainly not doing anything to that scale here. We really want to make this more like a main street type of deal, similar to, Stillwater. Um, but you do need to have enough units there and energy and support, and that is the goal that will balance the commercial, with the apartments and then mix in the amenities as we go. But you're on the river and why not take advantage of that, right? River is a huge many that people love to enjoy, um, and adding some really high-end, um, amenities there like gazebos and picnic areas, things that are safe. I think I've told the council, part of our pro forma includes security on the premise. You know, people just wanna go somewhere they can feel safe and enjoy their lives, and that's what we're trying to bring to the community here.
Other questions, comments? Jesse, if I were to ask you. Would you bring back a visual picture and drawing of what it's supposed to look like? Is that on the table for you? Are you absolutely against it?
Can I bring that to you in three weeks, Mayor? Let's make that a condition. Um, and and I'm not, I don't, I don't wanna sound insensitive here, but I mean, the reality is it will take multiple weeks to get that updated, right? Which puts us, if this has to go back to planning commission, I mean, this D R L is a tired thing for two months, probably, at best. I'm not sure what the schedule's like, but.
But it doesn't, this wouldn't necessarily need to go back to planning commission if he submits something that's responsive to their condition. Uh, then it's council's discretion.
So with that said, Jesse, what, what would your answer be then?
I would request that it gets approved tonight, Mayor, and I will withdraw the application if you don't like this, this picture I submit to you. Trust me a little, and then let's take a leap of faith together, but I will get you an updated plan within a month. Uh, if not sooner, and if you don't like that, I'll withdraw my application. I'm a man of my word.
I mean, when I go through this, I, I would agree that you can fix the windows, as I said. To me. It's what it looks like when we asked you to provide it at the planning commission, um, with. Parking, I was in the meeting, you said, yep, I can do it, but you, you know, and I don't wanna tie you to the last thing, but you said. Yep, I can do it to a lot of things, and then we would get down to the wire, and then it would. You would kind of badger us for not seeing your vision, and. Right now is our only time where we have the most discretion to ask questions and make sure this is a good product. We want you to succeed. So I'm, as you asked us questions, that might, that's my question to you.
Yeah, and. So Mayor, I. My understanding from planning commission to here is it's, it was a week time difference, right? And so, um, the city council is the big. Sort of like rubber stamp, right? Even though you guys can cancel this, so. Um, I was never under the understanding that I was gonna go back and try to get this updated in a matter of days and resubmit it. Um, nor have I done that in any other developments in any other cities. It's submit the concept, come back with the preliminary. Have the preliminary approved with conditions and then bring in the final plans, and so. While I understand that there is a parking garage here, again, I just asked, if I brought that back, would the project be approved? Or would it be denied because you didn't like how it looked? And if the answer is you didn't like how it looked, that's one thing, but if the answer is, hey, you got the unit to be approved. I'm just asking for council to recognize that.
My, my.
We can get that.
My answer would be, if you're meeting what the requirements are, it would be hard pressed for us to say no.
Correct, and so that's why.
Right, but right now, you're not showing me that you're meeting it. You're telling me, but you're not showing me.
Well, I'm taking, and the approval is a legal obligation to meet them. You know, that approval that you guys would vote on today with those stipulations is a legal obligation to meet them, so I, um, I think we're really. You know, I, I don't think there's a single difference, in my opinion, that city attorney can comment on that, but. Coming back and showing it or agreeing to meet it is called a legal requirement, so.
Any comment, Dave?
I don't know if I understand the question, Mayor. If, if he did, if you put conditions on it and he did not satisfy those conditions. You could not issue the building permit because the conditions were not satisfied. It's not a legal requirement that he satisfied them. He could not satisfy them, and then you would not issue a building permit for it.
And so. I- if, if the conditions are met and it's approved, I'm asking you guys to allow some, I'm asking you guys to approve it, understanding that I will meet those conditions. And, um. And it is a legally binding requirement of mine.
But I think you can also agree that to Ryan's point that he said, you, and and your architects fixed three things. But to hit, what he was pointing out is just that there was. A large list of other things that if they're in their drawing and making changes, they probably could have tackled those things.
True.
And and corrected them as you submitted it. But buttoned everything up as you.
I, I think there was an opportunity, again, this is their third application, and just being cognitive of cost, not having a clear direction, one hundred percent. I was just trying to keep it super simple. Here's why we're doing a night, fix these, right? Those other conditions. You know, it didn't say denied because of these conditions, right, but.
But there were, but there was a lot of talk about those issues, and that wasn't in our. But you sat in front of us for a long time, and we went back and forth with a lot of those issues.
Well, and again, Mayor, under the P U D development, some of that stuff was not set in stone, right, as it is with the M one. And so there wasn't clear understanding of what needed to be met there. You know, could I have added more brick and stone? Sure, but it maybe wasn't needed, because again, it's a P U D development. There wasn't a specific requirement on brick and stone. So I was trying to meet the requirements at the time that we were denied for. And and again, respectfully, council member Don Life's not approving it regardless if I meet those conditions. He's already made that statement, so.
I, I, I don't think you understood my statement. I'm saying that the conditions that are in here are not. Everything that I would say is a condition for approval. There are, there are parking requirements in here that refer to M one. We haven't discussed M one yet. M one at the time of this application didn't exist. So this was submitted under P U D. And it's not meeting the zoning requirements. So now, and I underst- I completely understand your point, that a P U D is different. We can go above and beyond. Or or change those zoning requirements. But why? Why would we? I mean, that's, that's the question I keep coming back to, and and to be honest, wouldn't you rather have us give you that feedback right now? Instead of at the final plan?
Well, I think your feedback and your vote for approving this is the feedback, Jesse, you need to meet these requirements so that it can be approved. That is the feedback I'm asking for, council member Don Lab. And and this was on the agenda for after the M one district. You had requested it be moved ahead of it. I don't know if that was intentional or not, but. If it was, it, it may be something that costs a lot of time and money for a guy just like, you know, I'm just like you guys. I don't understand why. If this meets the M one district that's about to be approved, it seems awfully. Crazy to think we're gonna deny this so you can come back under the M one district, especially considering you moved this ahead of that.
I, I think if we, uh, adopted the M one, you would have to reapply.
Mayor, this, we, you can still act on. This application as a standalone application. Even after the M one is approved.
Okay.
So to clarify, it would be approved under P U D.
Correct.
With M one-like conditions.
May I request from the city attorney, can I? Can we, can I ask not for a vote until after the discussion in the M one district and see if that passes? Is that, is there anything preventing that from happening?
The council set the agenda, they can. They have to follow the agenda they've set unless they vote to change that agenda, so it's. You can ask if the, if the council wants to move it, they can.
So I would just say, for everybody's sake, why don't we table this, re-put this after four point two, let you guys figure out the M one district. If I do have to re-submit, that would also be clarity for me as a developer to understand what am I re-submitting under? And and you guys can continue the discussion. I'll patiently wait. And I think that allows everybody to have clarity on what this would be approved with or without.
Council, thoughts on that?
I guess if that'll clarify and confirm things, then yes, I would, I think we could do that.
Thank you, council member.
Any other comments?
Uh, so I can just, because I think there was some insinuation there, that. The reason I think it's appropriate to discuss it in this order. Is because M one didn't exist when those, when this was submitted. And this is the order that the planning commission discussed then. I don't think, there's nothing wrong with us considering M one-like issues. For this development. The reason that I think it's more logical to discuss it in the way that it was submitted is because I don't wanna discuss two things at once. I don't wanna discuss where we think the M one should be and your application.
I, I agree, council members, we wanna be prudent to wait until you guys discuss the M one and see if that's approved, then we don't even have to discuss the P U D portion.
I don't think it is because you submitted it as P U D. You, you, you could have waited, right? You could have.
You know, respectfully, council member, I did email the city. I've waited. You guys had this on the agenda and took it off, you know, and so there's real cost involved, right? I mean, there's real cost involved to continue to wait, and I had waited months and months, and and again, I'm not, I don't wanna point to conspiracies, but. Adam, I emailed him, and he said, we don't know when that's gonna be on the agenda. We don't know when the M one's coming, so then I submit under P U D, and then magically the M one's back up. So it's just like, I'm a developer, guys. I'm not, I'm just trying to get clarity on what to do. And if we met the three reasons for denial, why can't we move forward with these conditions? And if we have an M one district that's about to get approved, why can't we do that first and then find out? And then why can't we approve it, understanding that? I, I, I mean, this seems like we're getting in semantics over verbiage here.
Any comments?
Yeah, just to be clear, this application is a P U D application, and regardless of what happens tonight on the M one. If you're gonna process this application, it's gonna be under the P U D application. You can, you can table it and handle it later. It would still be a P U D application, unless he resubmits a new application as an M one application if M one passes.
Cause he applied as a P U D.
Cause he applied as a P U D, it has to be processed from start to finish as a P U D.
Mayor, also, just for clarification, the reason this was on the agenda first at the planning commission was they already held the public hearing in April. Consider the M one district, so then that was no longer a public hearing. When this came to the planning commission, it was a public hearing, which are held before any other planning.
But it wouldn't have changed if the order were different at the planning mission because. Jesse applied under the P U D.
Correct. And Mayor, when staff was reviewing the application, we reviewed it in the context that the planning commission was discussing proposed standards for. The M one district. Which all those discussions were based on the prior discussions of this application and the other application. And looking at the other apartment buildings in Atsigo, plus the conference of plan discussion, so. All of that has informed where we, how we got to this point.
So I, I've just been trying to follow the guidance of his missions and the staff. And we run into roadblocks here with council two times now, and I, and I really hope that we're not at a third, because, again. You know, we're just following the recommendations of where the city's going, trying to be in line with where the city's going, and. I, I, it would feel really upsetting to be punished because we did that, but now being said, well, that isn't quite done yet, right, so. Um, we've got the conditions, there are legal agreement between the city and myself to meet those conditions. And so I just, I just ask you guys to please recognize the struggles here, and let's put this behind us and allow me to meet those conditions, which are. Gonna be in line with your M one district and well under your ability to do under a P U D.
Madam Mayor.
Right.
Maybe a question for Ron and, um, Dan. In, in past projects have. Have we? Got, um, presentations like this or applications that are not quite finished? Where the, the drawing maybe isn't done? Or, you know, what the council's looking at has been approved?
So, Mayor, every application is different. It's common that we apply conditions to any approval. I was joking with council member. Long death, the planning commission, we aim for ten conditions, and, uh, he'll get concerned until there's more than thirty, uh, though. You know, it's typical to have conditions. It's just a level of degree to what the conditions are. And the council's comfort level with those, so if the council believes, you know, the condition says, adjust the lot lines to make. Seventy feet meet requirements. Add some additional landscaping to this yard adjacent to this roadway, et cetera. It's not gonna substantially change the character of the project. Add some brick to this, add the garage stalls. It's the council's decision whether that's gonna potentially substantially change what's in front of you. And whether you want to see that before you act on it tonight, or if you're fine proving it with conditions, knowing it's coming back, uh, for final plan. And then they'd have to meet that condition.
But the concern would be, again. In my, my position is that if I'm not seeing what you're presenting, you're telling me all this, I'm. Hundred percent sure you're going to be complaining or yelling at me if I then deny it because you're gonna say. I don't have any vision. Well, I, I don't see what I'm supposed to be approving tonight. I see something that isn't what you were told at the planning commission to do.
Right, and so Mayor, that's where I'm asking you to understand that it's not, I can't change that, right? I mean, that's, the condition is a, in agreement. And so I will be bringing back the parking, and and that's why I was asking, if the parking stalls were there, would you deny the project? Because if the answer is no. Then why deny it now? If you know that I have to do that, right? And so that's the part that I'm struggling under.
But I don't know that I can trust that it's going, that you're going to do that.
Well, you're not trusting me, Mayor, you're trusting that the city's process, which has been followed a number of times, is, is legit.
It's also setting a precedent for every other project after this.
I, I think.
Jesse, I'm sure you're a great guy. I just, this is what I'm tasked with tonight. That's what I'm struggling with.
Well, Dan just commented that unless you get over thirty, they don't start to get worried. I mean, the precedent of that time and time again.
This is a lot of parking congestion over in that area anyway, so there's a lot of concern towards that, and you can appreciate that, I'm sure.
Oh, we, we paid for the parking study, that's the M one's being based on.
Sure.
Five or six thousand dollars.
And, and I think, um. What I worry about is setting a precedence, um. So I guess I would make a motion to deny. Based on. You know. I guess not seeing everything. And having a visual.
Mayor, uh, although you don't have a second yet, um, staff's recommendation would be rather than deny at this point. You would table with direction back to address the building materials, address the parking. And any of the other listed conditions that you feel are significant, that you want to see before acting upon the request. We want to be sure that the developer has adequate time to respond and concerns of the council before going to the, the step of denying a request.
And how much time would he get, uh, if we take that action?
So you can table it till the next meeting or as soon as he's able to resubmit information. Uh, city has until August fifth to make a yes or no decision.
Okay.
So if this is table, may I, I mean, is there clarification? Because last time I thought it was denied for those three reasons. So if we're gonna get a table tonight, what is the clarification that we need to see? Because if you're asking for a landscaping plan, lighting plans and stuff, that's gonna be well above the half a million dollars I've invested. I mean, at what point do I stop and say, there's other communities and towns that I can invest this money in? Again, I'm asking you guys as council members to understand and, and, and support a local small developer. You know, I don't know.
Every developer the same.
I think you should prioritize local developers. Why wouldn't you? Isn't that in the city comprehensive plan? Why won't, why can't you support a local developer over a national developer? But regardless of that.
Can and use, so.
It meets.
Mayor, the, the city treats all development applications the same regardless of the size or portfolio of the app.
So when it, when is the next meeting for council, Dan?
Next council meeting would be June ninth and twenty-third.
Can I bring it to the June ninth meeting? When would you need that by?
We would need it by Tuesday, the third.
And is the only concern, Mayor, and council, to see the parking structure? So that we can amend that and get that taken care of quickly, because the other stuff is.
I would allow everyone to answer that.
Yes, that's my request, please, if we can just get clarification on that, so that we can have a reasonable. So I can bring this back to you to show you the visual changes. As we work through some of the other stuff.
I guess I, I'm not gonna go ahead and say yes. I mean, I'll consider it, of course, but I, but I agree with what Ryan was saying. There's a lot of stuff to look at and consider, but. I'll consider it, for sure.
So what are the conditions that you would like to see? This is the question.
I guess the, the parking for sure, and seeing the, the visual of that, I would like to. What Ryan said about the other conditions, have a chance to understand that. And for myself. I would just add, cause I think, I understand why you want our list right now, and you want us to be crystal clear. I can completely respect that. But the problem is, once you change the design, something else might change, right? That's the thing I think I'm, I'm hearing that we're struggling with.
We're struggling with that, because it changes.
So I, I can't give you, I mean, I gave you a list of three before, right? And in, from, from where I'm sitting, one of those was addressed. And if you change the parking situation. It, it's gonna change some other things, and so I can't tell you definitively. I can tell you, I would like to approve this application. I, I, I do believe in mixed use. I think that is a good idea. It's a good design. But I also have a responsibility to ensure that the ordinances are being.
But I also have a responsibility to ensure that the ordinances are being followed and that's, that's going to be my standard. If you can meet the ordinances, I don't see any reason I could deny you.
So I think for myself, I would like to see the parking being addressed, the, the underground or covered parking, however you, that's not underground, but it's enclosed parking. Seeing that and how that ripple effect is between that, the structure as a whole, how it's affecting the, the lot. And then if there's any other ripple effects that occur to that parking lot that is caused by extending that out sixty feet. Are you going to shorten sidewalk or that boulevard area? How are you going to adjust for all that? Um, that would make sense. Um, I'm assuming that the tower portion wouldn't change for the apartment buildings. But if it does, that we would need to see that change, I guess. Um, so whatever changes are that are, are basically result of that parking and infiting in that parking was what we would need to see. And then the materials too on the exterior facade is showing that where you're going to make that attempt to meet our criteria.
So illustrative.
Illustrative, yeah, yeah. So you could probably just do like elevations and
Sure.
and color it up as this is brick and this is, you know.
Yeah, we'll have the architects update the exterior elevation.
Yeah.
Mayor, so you know, the, the conditions outlined in the report to the council or the roadmap to the developer what needs to be addressed. So the action items, actionable items in that would be revise the plans prior to application. Uh, such that exterior finished materials for proposed building comply with the zoning products, number three. Number four, developer shall document that the building setback from the north line, fire access and circulation north of building applies with fire code. Seven, the submitted plan shall be revised prior to application for final plat approval. Address the following off-street parking requirements, minimum three hundred nine off-street parking spaces, minimum one hundred and twenty-one off-street parking spaces, then enclosed structure attached to the principal building. Minimum one hundred and twenty-one stalls dedicated for use by the residents of the multiple family dwelling units. Those would be the ones I would see as the extraordinary conditions that have been discussed at length.
And I would just clarify for number seven, not proof of parking. I understand you said that proof of parking is not, no longer on the table, but the plan that was submitted to us is, has thirty percent proof of parking. So unshave that portion, right?
Yeah, because you have, it's gray on the.
Correct.
Yes, right.
The condition was listed as a minimum of three hundred nine off-street parking spaces shall be constructed.
Right.
And that's based on the M one Y Z A calculation, right?
Correct. Cause otherwise the number would have been higher. Higher, yeah.
With no requirement that there be um, enclosed, right?
But as that was discussed at the planning commission, all of the other apartment buildings have an enclosed space that matches the apartment building, um, not studio. Studios are not included. Was that, I believe, permission or Strateski mentioned that and Ken Can.
And so, Dan, do you know, did we require that as part of their P U D?
Yes, okay.
I believe that's why they, they mentioned that because they said everyone else has the same. So this would.
And that mayor, that requirement also came out of the twenty eighteen multiple family housing study and it was referenced in the comprehensive plan update.
The twenty twenty-three update?
Mm-hmm, okay.
So we would nee- need to make a formal table.
Right.
And then Jesse would pick the date, I guess, when he's planning to bring this back. But he needs to come back before August fifth, whatever.
Correct. And then Matt doesn't need to go to planning commission, Dan?
Not need to go to planning commission unless the council sends it. And as long as, from staff's perspective, as long as he's addressing the conditions that are outlined, the planning commission already voted to recommend approval with those conditions. So they should be satisfied.
And so I will just say for me, and I, I don't know if this is helpful to you or not, but if you do it under our current ordinances or whatever comes out of the M one discussion, um, because I'm not a fan of the building height, but I don't know how that discussion is going to go yet. Thank you, council member.
Great. We need to, is there any discussion with Ryan's comment further on that? I mean, we did. We went around and around with building height for a long time. Any other comments on building? Oh, sorry.
No, mayor, just a reminder, there was a motion that never received a second, just acknowledging whether or not that uh, failed due to lack of a second before we.
Then we, then we went up on discussing, so uh.
Or if you want to revoke your motion, Dave, I don't know if that's a possibility for the person to do that, uh, or it just fails because of lack of a second. Uh, well, I, first of all, I think the motion was to deny it and there was no second. So either the, Corey could renew that motion if he wants to, or if there's no second, then it would die at the lack of a second.
It can die.
Fair enough. Just wanted that for the record.
Thank you, sorry. I think once he said it, then we were trying to figure out how we could Mr. Hartong some direction.
Mayor, one additional comment, uh, you've thrown around the August fifth date, I believe. The last council meeting before that would be July twenty-eighth, so you may want to put that in there so that you're not calling a special meeting just for this occasion.
Thank you. We have that noted, I'll go. All right. We've discussed a lot. Jesse's been here in front of us for a long time. We've talked about tabling this. We've given him suggestions. Is there any more discussion or is there a motion to proceed? So Mr. Hartong has some direction on this.
Mayor, can I just clarify, would, would the motion be to table this to the July twenty-eighth meeting?
I, I would intend to bring this back on the.
I think he wanted sooner.
Yep.
I thi- I think we can allow him to have that time until the twenty-eighth, until he was ready. I think that would be maybe. But he needs to know what the deadlines are to meet the packet requirements. Yep.
Yeah, I, I've got the understanding of the timeline. So if it's tabled till the twenty-eighth, my intention is to bring it back to the next one. So as long as we can hopefully table it until the next meeting, that would be, that would be great.
Well, if the next meeting, I mean, in that case, I think then the motion would just be to set it for that meeting. And then if it has to be continued again at that meeting, that'll be fine. But at least the public and everyone will know the exact date that it's scheduled for.
And does Mr. Hartong have to do any specific requirements if he, he doesn't meet that deadline for two weeks from now? What is, I want to make sure he's clear with what his expectations are to contact staff.
Right. So the meeting, the sixty day rule would require it be done before August fifth and last scheduled meeting would be the twenty-eighth of July.
Okay.
But you can schedule it for the meeting on the, what, ninth of July? June, ninth of June, sorry. And if he doesn't bring it back, then you know, it can be bumped to a, a future meeting as long as it's the twenty-eighth or before.
And that would simply, mayor, that would simply involve staff putting memo into the packet saying we did not receive the plans. We communicated with developer, whatever the situation, requesting that the council again continue it to the next meeting. And that would likely be a consent item.
Not to throw a wrench in this, sorry.
No.
If he doesn't bring it back, it automatically gets approved, correct, mayor?
Not yet.
Uh, the intent would be at the meeting on July twenty-eighth. If he hasn't responded, then staff would have it presented as a discussion item to either approve with conditions or to deny it for uh, non-compliance with the intent of the P U D district.
Everybody good with that and understands it? And, and the reason that we're saying that he can, he's going to come back and have it on the schedules or have it on the agenda is just so we're doing that announcement in advance.
For mayor, so the public is aware that the item will be discussed and potentially acted upon by the council at that date.
Yeah. And, and before we make the motions, right, to your point, you have issues with the building height and you're referring to it under the P U D. We haven't obviously discussed the M one.
Right.
Because obviously it wouldn't fit under that.
Right, my, and certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, where the current requirements are, where the current maximum under our zoning ordinances would be forty-eight feet, four stories. And that's consistent with the other developments in the area or other, or the other buildings that have been developed to not see.
Correct.
It, it did feel out the planning commission that we were interchanging current proposed, current proposed when we discussed this item. And that's me sitting in the at, I would say, myself. That's a fair comment to make, Ryan. Because as we're applying parking stuff to something that we haven't even approved yet, and we're talking about building heights to something we haven't approved yet also.
And, and just like if, you know, if Mr. Hartong's plans change and things move around, our ordinances might change and move things around as well. So you know, that's, I, I certainly appreciate your comment that, you know, I think the M one discussion is going to be helpful for me too, so.
All right.
Just to be cl- clear, and I think everyone is clear, but this application is a, is a P U D application.
It's a P U D.
You are not bound by the M one standards.
Correct.
Good.
So he knows by submitting it with a P U D, he was going way above what we were even allowing under the current. And you're aware of that, Jesse, correct?
Yes, thank you.
All right. We're looking for a motion. Anyone have one? I will make a motion to table this application to our June ninth meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have to spell out the conditions? I believe Jesse has heard them. Audra's typing away and you can call Dan in the morning.
I understand.
Okay. All right, there's a motion by Jessica, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four point two, which is sort of zoning ordinance, mixed use M one district. Dan.
Mayor, thank you. Uh, please try and forget anything you've discussed in the last. Clean slate. So the comprehensive plan was adopted in twenty twenty-three and included a mixed use land use category. Um, its establishment of this designation was based on the multiple family housing study done in uh, twenty eighteen that looked at areas that would be appropriate for multiple family uses within the city. Uh, as well as looked at opportunities for mixed use development where apartments could be utilized to provide market support for designated commercial areas. Um, those areas were concentrated primarily around the County Road thirty-nine and Highway one oh one interchange as well as along County Road nineteen, north of the city of Albertville. What was outlined as part of the multiple family housing study and the comprehensive plan was that a new zoning district would be established to address mixed use zoning districts versus using the case by case approach of a planned unit development district. Uh, the intent would be to make these, as I said before, referring to that, uh, commercial zoning districts that allowed for apartment uses, uh, that would be done as a conditional use permit. So there would be the, I have Carly share it, sorry. I might.
It won't let you share.
We're just looking at ourselves.
There we go. There we go. Thank you. I thought Adam kicked me. So, um, the intent would be to, through that conditional use permit process, establish very clear performance standards uh, for allowing multiple family units within these developments. The lot requirements and setbacks are basically set up to be the same as the commercial zoning districts in terms of requiring thirty feet front yard setback, ten feet side, twenty feet rear and thirty-five foot setback if you're abutting a uh, residential use or zoning district. Building requirements similarly would be the same in terms of the commercial uh, building materials. Uh, where there is uh, flexibility sought would be for uh, the height of the building. Uh, again, trying to create that opportunity for density, uh, to support commercial areas. Looking at the Highway one oh one corridor as unique from other areas of the city, uh, especially at County Road thirty-nine, uh, but allowing a building height up to seventy-five feet is what the planning commission settled on. Uh, more to that later. Uh, but then other areas of this district would be uh, limited to forty-eight feet uh, in height. Specific to the multiple family standards, a thousand square feet per dwelling unit, so basically forty-three units per acre. Uh, to address the situation that came up with one of the prior applications involving the Richard Baffet property north of the uh, Atsigo waterfront development where they were proposing a seven or eight story building directly adjacent to Highway, or County Road forty-two, with single family homes across the street. What the planning commission recommended and developed was kind of a stepped building requirement. So the first hundred feet of the property adjacent to County Road forty-two, the building would be limited to three stories or thirty-five feet. Same as the commercial development to the south. So there's no, not, not necessarily a change in the character of that use. But then it would allow some of that density to be stacked closer to what would be the future Quad A Avenue up to fifty-two feet, which is basically four stories for a mixed use building. Then on the other side of Quad A Avenue, adjacent to Highway one oh one, that would be the seventy-five foot building. So you're moving the intensity of the use away from the uh, residential areas such that when the property was guided commercial before, this is the same type of building that could be constructed in that area directly adjacent to forty-two. What the planning commission also raised was, okay, what about the areas uh, along County Road nineteen? So the same step requirement was put in thirty-five feet if it's a but, budding the residential zoning district that allows single or two family uses. But then that area only goes up to forty-eight feet. So the building directly adjacent to County Route nineteen, for example, could be more stories high. The same basically as Parkview retail or Parkview grand or village uh, structures. The other requirements were that is, if it's a budding a residential district that allows single or two family dwellings, there's a floor area requirement where the square footage of the building can't uh, exceed seventy percent of the lot area. That's working to control the bulk of the building and the intensity of the use. Uh, that thirty-five foot setback area between the residential use and the, the mixed use building has to be landscaped. Uh, like a buffer yard requirement with evergreens uh, and materials that will screen the, the two activities between each other. And then the final requirement was uh, the two stalls per unit, one must be enclosed within a structure attached to the principal building. And that only applied to units with one or more bedrooms. So taking out the efficiency or the studio apartments where uh, price and affordability is more of a consideration. So this goes back to prior discussions regarding the Mississippi Landings project as well. Other projects within the city, um, dealing with uh, Guardian Angels in the village being two of the taller buildings. The Wyndham Hotel is also in a scale similar to the Guardian Ang- Angels building. Uh, because all the other buildings have used pitched roofs, the height is technically measured to the midpoint of the pitched roof. Because as that structure leans back, its visual effect to someone viewing it from the street is lessened. Whereas a flat roof is basically a horizontal plane or vertical plane parallel to the roadway. So it has more of an impact. Where the planning commission looked at this is, they realized that uh, other structures have basically been limited to four stories in the city. Uh, but they felt that again, Highway one oh one being a unique opportunity. Um, you also have the benefit uh, that I've seen in other cities where if you put a tall structure directly adjacent to the freeway, it helps mitigate that freeway noise to the residential areas further set in. Uh, so that's a, a positive in that. Uh, they didn't want to deal with the planning commission I'm referring to, didn't want to deal with pitch roof, flat roof. So they just capped it at a flat seventy-five feet. That basically allows for a six-story building with the elevator, pantries or um, and the uh, mechanicals on the roof to be accommodated. Um, this is just an illustration of that building height transition comment. We had the graphic on the left for the planning commission that the engineers all said, well, why didn't you show it to plan view as well? So. We put together this stripe drawing, the yellow area being the three story thirty five foot height, orange is four stories, forty eight feet. And the red being, uh, seventy five feet. So you can see that it's pushing that tallest structure all the way to one oh one on the opposite side of that road. Uh, the same would apply, looking at kind of the concept plans that have been developed for County Road nineteen to have. The, uh, frontage or the back edge roads with residential on the interior side and the commercial mixed use buildings out. Towards County Road nineteen, so there is still that stepping down of intensity and building height and building bulk. That's kind of a baseline recommendation of the comprehensive plan. So the property to the north of this was, uh, residential and allowed single or two family. Then they'd have to provide that same transition coming south for that first five hundred feet.
So it would really only back up the red to more to the south than.
Right, it pushed the red further south, correct. The property north of this is also guided for mixed use as well, but. Correct, yep. Yep, anywhere that you would have a mixed use M one zoning district, but up to anything zoned R one. Through R five and that includes over across a roadway, uh, so from the center line of Parish Avenue, for example. Uh, this requirement applies.
Which was our concerns with the LeFave. Application came in. For the LeFave property, I should say.
Yeah, you'll recall that they initially proposed it on that side and then hearing the opposition to that, they proposed moving it to the other side of Quad A. Directly adjacent to one oh one, which was more acceptable. They still had other issues that caused that project not to move well. And then the final, uh, issue was the off street parking methodology. Uh, this came out of the twenty twenty three application from Mississippi Landings where they did a parking study. Uh, and looked at various ways to accommodate for, uh, off street parking analysis for mixed use development. Uh, because you don't want to take just, you've got a hundred units, so you need two hundred parking stalls for that. You've got two hundred. Uh, twenty thousand square feet of commercials, so you need two hundred parking stalls for that, so you need four hundred. Because there is obviously offset peak days of the week and peak times within each day. So rather than cause a developer to construct more parking that's needed for the actual use of the property. It's better to kind of formulate, uh, how that can be staggered and offset. And that also benefits the city because you end up with less, uh, stormwater runoff, less stormwater facilities, et cetera. So this methodology was adapted from the city of Wayzetta. Um, it's a little bit different situation, uh, given that Wayzetta has on-street parking areas where they use this. They also have public parking facilities. Uh, but the the theory is the same that those parking stalls are allocated as part of their overall parking requirements as well. Uh, we've seen this methodology adopted in other communities now as well. Uh, that we work for, uh, and has passed through their engineering planning staffs as an appropriate way to deal with mixed use development. So the planning commission did hold a public hearing that they opened April twenty first to consider it, uh, they tabled it to. Address that building height transition requirement and brought that back to them at their meeting last Monday. Uh, they were satisfied with that outcome after further discussion of it and good part to recommend approval of the M one district as presented.
Alright. Thank you, Dan. Alright, questions for staff? Comments about this. Corey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dan, uh, so I don't know a ton about this, but. So would mixed use, could a traditional commercial property come in and just put in commercial property? Or would it have to be this combo platter, as they say, of, uh, apartment retail?
Mayor, so the intent is it's a mixed use district, so it allows for standalone commercial. Buildings, standalone multiple family buildings or a building that combines commercial and, uh, multiple family uses. So for example, you could develop on the LeFave property, an apartment building. Retail store, an office building. But the it's the idea that all the uses are occurring within that designated area, not necessarily a single structure.
So you can't have one without the other.
Yes.
More, more or less, okay. Is is this, uh? Is this gonna spur growth, do you think? Like commercial wise and retail and restaurants that people want?
Mayor, so the theory behind the promotion of mixed use is that. With the changes in retail and office now, since Amazon and COVID pandemic. You need to have more density, more households adjacent to commercial to support it. So what this is doing is taking what we had as the land use plan that had nodes of commercial development around the major interchanges with. Stepping back, multiple family or townhouse stepping back to single family, it's loading more potential households into those commercial areas. To then drive market. Interest and support for those commercial businesses. So you're you're trading some commercial floor space, but for the opportunity to make the commercial that does develop more sustain.
You were about the the map, Dan, um. I could talk to you about, um, where this would absolutely, so we talked about nineteen. We talked about, um, north of the Wyndham. Mr. Harton's property. Do you have a map that you can pull up just so everybody's aware of?
Yep.
What we're talking.
It's basically the area west of Highway one oh one, north of the Atsiga waterfront development, north of the Wyndham. It's the Atsiga waterfront district proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the area, uh, where the village apartment is and then the lots north of that as part of the P U D district. For Great Riddler Center established in two thousand and six, designated that as a mixed use village area. That's how that apartment building was allowed into that P U D district. Um, the west side of the V F W, uh, soccer fields was guided for this mixed use as a way to. Kind of put a transition between commercial fronting to Quam Avenue. Uh, then some form of higher density residential transitioning back to the. Single family that's in Emerson Point or the future potential development of the D N Y property. Um, then the only other area would be in on the County Road nineteen corridor, uh, you've got the Slavic property. Basically west of Sunray Farms and, uh, Dura Creek. And then the northwest corner of County Road nineteen and Seventieth Street, which was the Kurt's property, I believe. Um, where it's transitioning from what is does it already designated for mixed use in Kittredge Crossings across. To County Road nineteen with commercial on that highway front.
Thank. I think it's going, everyone sees the visual of where this is actually.
And Mayor, a landowner could come in and request an amendment to the comprehensive plan to designate that for mixed use. At some point, but that would have to be obviously evaluated by the planning commission and council, kind of in the context of the city's overall plan. As well as the specific area that they're proposing.
Right, because I mean, obviously, as we've heard, the developers want. Those commercial spaces to grow, but by requesting it just somewhere, it doesn't make sense. You're not getting that any. People coming to it is just going to be just the people that live there that make it to a little coffee shop or whatever it may be. Alright, other questions from council regarding this? Yes, right. Um, right, I have one question for you. Can you give me the example of where you talked about that Inkerd store and, uh, what city? Okay, I I again, I'm a visual person, so I just wanna, well, give me that example if you.
Yeah.
Okay. And. I, your comment then about making it equal, I think our concern was, or I guess I'll. But the planning commission's concern off nineteen was that you don't have one oh one. So by putting a huge tall building, it very much would seem out of place since County Road nineteen is not at all comparable to one oh one. If we were talking about along ninety four, I think that would be a different discussion. But there was the talk about, you know, if you're if you're living in those homes and you see this huge building plopped there. Did it, did it seem a little out of place? Oh, I I'm sorry, I thought you were saying you thought it should be. The seventy five feet on that side, I'm sorry, okay, I missed and I was just like, that would look terrible. Yes, okay, yeah. The sh- the shadowing, the height of things. Based on all of the other buildings are at grade. And they're building then, they're retaining walls up to the structure, so you are taking the first floor for parking. I I guess maybe on the west side of the city. You could, you could, uh, Ron, the engineer is giving me that shake that yes, we could dig under, but on the east you have to be at grade. For especially those properties, but.
Yeah, that was a sixty thousand dollars stall, um, cost I was throwing out there. I thought for whatever reason, I thought this was below grade. It's actually on grade, so that's a different price point. But yeah, when you're talking.
Water table.
You have a water table, that's why you can't do it near the river.
Ex of the Mississippi.
So I think what we're seeing in in Minneapolis and St. Paul, we saw a huge exodus of a lot of businesses. Because they couldn't get people to come downtown or go downtown to work. Um, and you're seeing this huge rush to try to convert these existing buildings downtown, I mean, St. Paul and Minneapolis. To contain more housing. So we naturally have the housing around us to support businesses. What we're trying to do is balance that immediately around those businesses and the mixed use. I think, um, along one oh one, you know, if you are allowing for a few taller structures. It's going to be soil dependent and how tall you can really go in those areas. Um, you have a little bit of a ravine, um, that to deal with. It dips down, it doesn't go up, it goes down. So you have like an elevation difference as well. So you have the parking condition and then and then you have, you know, where it's going to drive that first floor to be really. Um, you know, a combination of un- um, enclosed parking and retail or commercial property of some sort. And then your housing is on top of that. You're you're confining, you're really restricting what these developers can do with that property. By saying floor versus an elevation, that's an opinion. Um, and and because you can take that same concept of forty five feet, put it up on hot on a hill and it feels very different. If you pick an elevation, it makes a little more consistent throughout your community. It's a thought.
Correct. Which that has been the discussion when they talked about it at planning commission that. If you're driving, you don't necessarily see the Holiday Inn because the way the freeway, you're, you know, you're looking at the roof, you don't see rockwoods at all because it's down in the valley. I think that's what you're talking about. Um, you know, when. Back in the day when one oh one was flat before they had to raise it. Those buildings would have looked much taller, but the way that the one oh one corridor is there. And the being down in the valley now, it does seem. That makes a little bit more sense to give them some height. I definitely would not want to see that same height over on nineteen. I think it would look very out of place. I've said.
Oh, the percentage on housing supply.
For apartments that, yeah, okay.
Mayor, so if you're talking about a greenfield development like the example on the screen, they have to plat that. And one of the criteria for plating it is looking at the land use that's going to go on the site and evaluating sewer capacity. Or the water capacity either direction or the road capacity. So in prior or other applications that have come forward, whether it's a P U D or a straight. M one district preliminary final plat, there will still be utility study done to ensure there's capacity. There'll be a traffic study done. To make sure that the roadways can accommodate the intensity of the land use that's proposed. So and also because of the way we handle development in terms of. We don't know things to allow for uses until we actually have a development proposal so that we can fully evaluate that. Or that we could fully evaluate to say, wow, you know, we just had three six story buildings put up with four hundred units. Do we need another apartment building at this time? No, we're, the city's flooding the market with that. We're not going to approve the rezoning at this time because it's unbalancing our. Housing supply.
And I'm here that, um, that was, uh, kind of what I was gonna ask what Ryan was, so so we don't have that percentage anymore. Of your, you're good on the apartments, because that and and the only reason I ask as much as I can appreciate, that's kind of the big boom is. So many residents, when I was out campaigning, you know. They don't love apartments around here. A lot of the people have been here a long time.
And so we did do away with the. And so we did do away with the ten percent as a hard fast rule is because it became problematic from looking at developments and whether you're really evaluating the development itself.
Sure.
And part of it, yes, people don't like people you've talked to may not like apartments, but there's the need to provide range of housing types and sizes and affordability and styles. You hear developers talk about the change going on in society.
With the baby bars and all that.
It's not just at Seago that's looking at this. You look at all the apartments going up on the new six ten corridor in Brooklyn Park and Maple Grove. You know, when we first did the multiple family housing study, the city was talking about building heights, the four-story building was kind of what you saw in cities closer to the metro. Look at all the new buildings along six ten corridor. Now they're five or six-story buildings suddenly, so. And that speaks to the economy of scale and affordability limits too, so. What this proposal is, isn't necessarily pushing the envelope in terms of what's going on in the housing market within the twin city. It's just defining areas that are appropriate for at Seago to have that in type of housing.
And it's just an option.
At a scale, right. But the way we've structured the city's zoning and subdivision controls, city still has quite a bit of discretion to approve certain projects that if you were a metro city, wouldn't necessarily.
So one question with that, so still in the audience, but if we were to keep the height restriction on these properties not go to seventy five feet, somebody could come in and still build three different buildings that are forty five feet tall. And you'd have way more houses than if you just let them build one seven story. I I mean, that would be the option for them. So it almost forces them to build it high and then focus on potentially a different retail you like a separate building that's a restaurant, let's say, or something like that, and then attach those commercial to that apartment piece. What would be the restriction if you had the seventy five feet? And they wanted to put two of the seventy, I mean, is there a limit and what would the city's ability to not allow that to happen?
So if, for example, this property, someone came in with two seventy five, you know, you're going to have requirements for off-street parking, uh which is going to be a big factor in how that gets accomplished.
Okay.
Um then you'd have limitations on sewer and water infrastructure. Because when the city first did its sewer planning back in the nineteen nineties, it was assumed that these areas would develop with a certain density and a certain amount of sewage flow.
And now we're adding.
And so those trunk sewer pipes are in the ground and all you you're basically doing is allocating out the sewer capacity to other properties. So if somebody comes in at over what was estimated for that area, you have to make sure that there's they're not taking capacity from some other property downstream that's still got a or upstream that still has to develop.
You'd be adding cars to the road and obviously more use on our system. But you.
Mayor, just speaking generally, so when the city first invested in sewer and water, we did a fairly rudimentary fiscal analysis on the cost of development for one acre lots versus sewered lots. Bottom line is density is your friend when it comes to financing public infrastructure and services because you know, take the single-family lots, the acre lots were designed at hundred and fifty feet wide. The first sewer districts were seventy five, so you're getting two houses for every one unsourced lot, double the tax revenue to the city. Now you're looking at putting, you know, one house uh or forty-three homes per acre for every one house in an unsourced lot. And the investment that goes into that, plus the way it's calculated in a different tax ratio, et cetera, so it becomes different. And I'm not suggesting that an apartment building is forty-three times the tax revenue.
Adam's like, don't be throwing out those numbers.
Cringing a little bit over. Tax revenue. A type of development determines the allocation of the tax capacity. It doesn't generate revenue. Revenue is set in terms of a tax levy by the city council building, this building or that building doesn't increase revenue at a different pace. It allocates it to a different taxpayer based on the tax rate system set by the legislature, so it doesn't derive more revenue solely because you build a different type of product.
Yeah, I was like, Ryan.
Yeah, just just.
You're looking for the break even.
Yeah. So Dan, you you mentioned the Brooklyn Park Maple Grove, the six ten quarter and those building heights. I think we, you know, when this first came up, we were all like, wow, those are really tall and and then they kind of keep coming. So have those other cities amended their heights of their building given the six ten expansion, like what is that like? I I guess explain to me because obviously all of their buildings were not that tall before.
No, they were not. And so I'm not certain whether they did it by a certain zoning district. Maple Grove, I know relies on planning development quite a bit. So they may just be responding to developers saying, you know, this is what we would like to propose for this quarter and city saying this is a unique corridor, it's some of our last remaining developable property, um so we're gonna maximize that.
Yeah, because their stuff up by the fountains is not that tall. So it's not that it's the new stuff. It seems like it's just in that corridor.
Yeah, I first saw it east of or west of ninety four and then Brooklyn the interchange at one sixty nine and uh six ten, they're really building and they're talking about going taller than that even on the northwest corner.
So to kind of recap, the benefit to the city, if if this is approved, rather than go through a P U D would be let you recap.
Mayor, so establishes, this is the city's requirements for this type of development, establishes a level playing field that any developer approaching the city to develop on one of these sites guided for mixed use, they can simply look up the zoning ordinance requirements, design their project accordingly versus planned unit development tends to be, well, we're gonna base it on this zoning standard, but then we're gonna modify this provision and we're gonna and the concern there is it creates, you know, the developer doesn't know what they're getting when they go into it because maybe they listen to the staff, maybe they listen to the planning commission, maybe they listen to the, you know, they're working their way through.
It's making a more efficient process.
Right. Mm-hmm. And you can run into concerns like, well, you gave that developer something, but you're not agreeing to give that to this project, so.
The perception of favoritism.
Right. It's a, you know.
Do we have that?
It's always the best to be consistent.
And in these areas that you have highlighted, we aren't showing lack of favoritism to the other developers that went in because those are not in mixed-use developments. So am I saying that correctly? Right, like so over by Coburn's, that would not have been a mixed-use option. South of Target and then over um Casey Darkwall's property, like we're not, those are not, it's not like they've missed out on going higher because those are not areas that we are considering for mixed use.
The city basically established what the standards for those were. For example, you talk about um the Coburn's development and even Parrish Meadows to the south. The whole area is, if you look at the two developments together, it's mixed use. You've got commercial one thirty-nine and forty-two and then the apartment building and then townhouse. But they all developed under conventional zoning districts just established for those specific sites. Whereas this kind of combines that all into one district.
Then you still have the discretion to, as a council?
Through a zoning map.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? I just, Ma'am, Mary, I just want to make a comment. I mean, with one oh one, the seventy-five feet and then other lots, so we'll say nineteen because that's what we were talking about, the forty-eight feet. I do, I I personally, I like the diversity within the city because, you know, with one oh one, as we mentioned before, with Jesse's previous product or project, I I personally didn't have a problem with the height. I think you need that off of something like one oh one to visibly see it. I I just like that diversity with that area with about in the highway one and then of course others, not so much. Say again nineteen using that as an example, that I just the seventy-five feet would not get there. There's certain areas that it would, and I think off of the one oh one is a is a great area for that to have a diversity within our city and and then bring in maybe other, you know, developers. We don't want to leave anyone out. And I think that just makes our city even that much more, I'll use the word again, diverse. Um with bringing in different developers, different commercial apartment buildings, whatever it may be. But I do like that aspect of it. I do appreciate that we've also addressed the step up of the buildings um to be respectful to the people, especially um west of, this is County Road forty-two, um they were here first and that really does now give them kind of that assurance that we are being thoughtful of protecting their homes and what their views are going to be versus popping something big just because the land finally sells. It pushes it towards the freeway and not in their side yards. That would technically be along forty-two there. And I think it also then assures the residents on the west side on forty-two and you've got Sunray Farms, Kittredge Crossing, that we're being aware of what that looks like for them too. And pushing it not towards them, but away from them. It will be an issue though. I mean, you do have some homes on the west side of nineteen that still could choose to live there and that gets a little weird there because you would be pushing it towards nineteen away from Sunray Farms, but it really would be in their front yard.
Right, Mayor. And the distinction is those properties are all still zoned agriculture. And the long-term plan is that County Road nineteen, both frontages are commercial. So those homes are interim uses. They're expected to go be redeveloped at some point as growth continues. The homeowner can choose to stay there as long as they wish. Um and it's, you kind of see the same situation on forty-two, South Beatty Fifth Street, the home, the the barn and everything there. Well, that whole area east of forty-two is gonna be commercial at some point and those homes will eventually be pushed up. Same way, Timmy Face Farmstead is eventually going to be pushed up.
Marketing wise, do you think uh this'll make this stuff more attractive or will get more of the commercial stuff that we're looking for?
Mayor, I think the expectation would be is if it creates more opportunity for multiple family, it creates more opportunity than for commercial to come behind it. Much the same way as the continued residential growth over the last twenty-five years has led to the commercial growth we're now seeing on forty-two and thirty-nine.
Okay, other questions or comments? Is there any other areas in this proposal that people had concerns with? I will say, I I can appreciate too that I, the parking, I'm I'm glad that we are looking at that and kind of coming up with a formula that we can all agree to. It feels like for a few years now, we've been not comfortable or consistent with it and we can all tell that, yes, if you're gonna have a office, they're not there at night, so that parking lot sits empty. I think to make it very clear though, the council and the planning commission has always respected and been concerned that the residents that do choose to live in these apartments, in these mixed-used areas aren't walking super far to get to their apartment. That's been a concern that's been brought up multiple times. And it's great that some are offering security, which I can appreciate, but maybe that's how it looks now, but you don't know what the next developer is gonna bring in. And so pushing and being very thoughtful about what that looks like and not having a empty parking lot doesn't look great on anything either too, so.
Madam Mayor.
Comment to it. I'm correct.
Dan, maybe you can talk me off the ledge here. I'm having trouble because I keep envisioning, here's the gateway to the new Maple Grove by doing this and I, as much as I love working in Maple Grove, I I don't want to see at Seago turn into that and I convince me that I'm that we're not gonna be that.
Mayor, you know, at Seago's defining its own character through its comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan talks about the need to provide opportunities for balanced housing supply, which includes apartments because, you know, people will have children, maybe their children want to live here where you can't afford a townhouse or single-family home, so you start in an apartment. Or as you get older, maybe you want to not do yard work and move to an apartment. That's the societal change that's happening now. So otherwise, at Seago's, as the city, their role is facilitating private market conditions. There's a reason at Seago is growing and it's because it's proximate to Twin Cities metropolitan area. You know, there's reason that people are, developers are coming out here and talking to landowners to buy. City's role in that is to then provide infrastructure and pace the the rate of development so that infrastructure can be, you know, accommodated. So, you know, I've had people comment about, well, I want at Seago to be what it was. Well, what point in time are you talking about? Because at Seago's population nineteen sixty was a thousand people. It doubled just nineteen seventy. It doubled again by nineteen ninety. Two thousand, two thousand. So unless you were here in nineteen sixty, you're part of the growth that has come out from the twin cities and chosen to make at Seago home. That's, you know, if you're not gonna move to at Seago, you're gonna go to St. Michael, you're gonna go, you're gonna go to the next suburb out. It's just
Right.
Maple Grove didn't look like Maple Grove thirty years ago, so it it's kind of an inevitable market reality that this development is happening and it's the city's role to participate in that in partnership with a willing land seller and a developer that's interested in being.
And I guess my comment to Corey would be, what part of Maple Grove are we talking about? Shopping? For all the medical facilities. I mean, they have a lot of them, so.
No, I I it's.
I I'm just asking.
It's like just crazy busy and I, you know, that sort of thing. It's uh I'm old school in a way. I mean, I but in the name of economic development, I mean, if if that's what you're suggesting, I mean, I trust you.
Mayor, it's the the city's multiple family housing study that was reviewed by the planning commission and the city council and And the comprehensive plan that the planning commission developed and recommended and the city council approved. It's not, it's not certainly my decision under.
You're the face, you're the face of it.
I simply represent the law.
Yeah. I think uh if I hear what you're saying and totally understand. Um but you can't stop. But if you don't plan as a community for that development, for that growth, uh then you're always reacting. And then you have a city that is not well thought out, hodgepodge and always behind.
Right.
Thank you. That's always our intent, obviously, as we're looking at each of these applications that come forward. We've expressed that. We've expressed that to them too, as though they become our neighbors and as the developers come in, build and then leave, what's the city left with? So making sure that we're able to manage that growth and long-term stress on the system.
Mayor, that's where the comprehensive plan fits in with the utility master plans, capital improvement plan, the annual budget, so that it's all interrelated as part of your decision-making process.
All right, questions, comments, otherwise in motion?
And Mayor, I'll motion. Motion to adapt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four, amending the zoning ordinance regarding zoning districts and mixed uses and approve publication in summary form.
Second. Hey, there's a motion by Tina, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? Yes. I guess my comment to that back, Ryan, would just be that I would be concerned if we don't direct where these taller buildings can go, we're going to end up having, as as you said, you wanna not limit it, I would be concerned that all of a sudden then we're gonna get a seven-story request off of Nash Law. And that just would seem very out of character. So I feel like this gives us the basis of the corridor, of the one-on-one corridor specifically in those areas where we've talked about the topography being lower there, so maybe it doesn't look as high. I would agree. I'm not a huge fan of ginormous buildings. I do think they look out of place. That was why I didn't support. And I appreciated that they didn't support it off the um County Road nineteen area. But I do think there are some areas along one-on-one where seven stories might not look like seven stories as you're driving by. It it, I would agree that it might not feel that way if I'm on the ground looking up, but I'm referring to the bowl area, so. Uh I mean, it really does appear to like a bowl once you're on ninety, uh one-on-one, excuse me.
Be clear, it's basically sixty or six-story limit, at seventy-five feet, not seven stories.
Oh, sorry. I said seventy-five because you had that visual before. Sorry, sorry. That's exactly where it came from. Correction on my height of the building, so there's no clarifying. Nobody's coming back to say, no, the mayor said seventy-five feet, no.
We gotta get you set up with Google Earth.
Yeah, okay. Is there any other comments? We do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
Right, who else denied it? I'm sorry, Corey and Ryan.
Sorry, Dan.
It's the council's decision.
All right, um city council reports and updates. First one is heritage preservation.
Thank you, Mayor. Um they did not meet this month. I don't have the date in front of me for the meeting next month, but it's it's planned.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Uh Parks and Recreation, Michelle.
Um we had a great um grand opening last week for the um Ferris Fre- Fre- Frederick's Park. I pronounce that wrong every time. I apologize. Um uh and um so we did not meet. That was in the meeting. I think they had a brief discussion um prior to the 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 gathering starting. So the next meeting would be, I think, the third.
Perfect, thank you. Um planning commission, Ryan. Thank you. Public safety.
Public safety. Um that Wednesday, um we are now starting all of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Um so the commission agreed to doing that, which is, I think, great. Um we also discussed recognizing uh first responders month, so um I believe it's the same day, the fifteenth of May uh every year. Um and uh one of the commissioners read off the names of the Minnesota officers who lost their lives in the line of duty. Um and we also took um some time of silence as well to observe those. Um the commission also discussed recommendations for modifying their language in the mission statement. Um so we are, or I should say, the commission is going to um they tabled that and then they're gonna send a copy uh with the proposed proposed language to Heidi. Um and see what options we can come up for the next meeting, which will be then June ten.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. Really brought a board about you have five one. So uh we'll do any updates first and then we'll move on to item five. So does the city council have any updates? Pass one, okay?
Um Madam Mayor, and I think Adam, we're gonna address the compost site still tonight or no?
We get there.
Okay.
All right, then we'll move on to item five point one, Ryan. You have your question, hold on.
Madam Mayor.
All right, it's great.
I'll make a motion to approve pay application number five in the amount of two hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred nine dollars and thirty-five cents for work completed on the fire and emergency services facility project.
Second. Motion by Corey, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to one. All right, moving on to staff rep, well, item six point one, consider scheduling a special city council meeting for audit presentation and budget discussion.
Uh Mayor, uh the request would be two separate meetings, so tonight I think I'll just uh keep this shortened request. Uh June ninth at six P M for the audit presentation would bring back the budget meeting scheduling, which wouldn't have been till July anyway.
So, so what's it, yeah, what's?
June ninth, six P M, please.
Okay. Yep.
Correct.
I will make a motion to call first. Uh you want an audit presentation or are we doing budget like?
Audit presentation.
Presentation, June ninth at six P M. All right, motion by Jessica, seconded by Ryan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. The meeting is scheduled for June ninth. Moving on to item six point two.
Mayor, council, uh an item was added to the agenda tonight and RCA was distributed to you uh prior to the meeting, so uh staff is recommending that city council accept a resignation from an employee.
It's on the dais for everybody. Yeah, you're okay. Questions and a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion. Motion to accept the resignation of Matt Cena from the position of mechanic effective May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion accepted. We understand reports and updates, Adam.
Mayor, council, as council member Tanner mentioned, uh myself and uh street manager Lanson met with the city of Albertville uh about two weeks ago to discuss the future of the compost site. Uh so Albertville has presented some I'll call them interim solutions uh to controlling access at the compost site that will involve um uh they've done some landscaping over there. If you've driven by there lately, they planted a bunch of trees. They're looking to install a gate, uh hiring an attendant and finding a little, I'll call it a hut slash shed for the employee to work out of. Uh there would be hours restrictions for access to the compost site that's aligned with that. Um so still working through some of the details with Albertville uh on that, but um our initial target was sometime after the fourth of July, fourth of July to uh implement those changes, so uh we've had communications develop a flyer that's uh in Albertville's hands right now for review, so just kind of waiting for them to keep the ball rolling. Uh in terms of when they're ready to go and have everything in place and then we can notify uh residents of both communities of depending changes.
Do they have some proposals on hours and?
We do, and and they're not uh finalized yet. I would say, I know they, the Albertville City Council discussed them at their last meeting.
Okay.
But I I won't say that they're in final form yet, so.
Okay.
But there would be hours um seasonally uh reasonable. Uh and then over the winter, there would be either by appointment for Christmas trees or some undefined schedule yet for the winter months, so.
Okay.
Is Albertville um kind of fielding the same kind of comments from residents that we are?
Yeah, it's not really from residents where where the concern is. It's from people that don't live in either community. Uh or contractors that are abusing the site, which are in turn driving up costs for handling the material and removing it from the site, which is borne by the taxpayers of each of the two communities, so the idea is to restrict it to the people that are paying for that service, uh get that back in mind a little bit, so.
Sounds good.
Drives up the cost.
Yep. Yeah, one of the examples we looked at during the meeting was, I believe, the city of Orno. Um so residents have the option to bring in uh a certain amount of material uh on their first trip, but if they bring back more on a certain day or it's over a certain size and they're uh responsible for paying a charge related to that, I I I don't wanna speak for Albertville, but I'm not here, but I I don't think that's their intent right now is to move to a cost recovery. But it's certainly something that we could explore if that relationship continues, so.
It it, I I would agree. I mean, we are paying a lot for the service now and now we're gonna be adding personnel to it. That's another person, if there's a way to. I I believe in Half River, you get a permit. And that's what gets you in, but it's a, it's a key fob. Card card reader, yes.
Yeah, and absolutely without river, but that's what's done in St. Michael, so a resident has uh access to a card that
You have to go to the reading hall and get it.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then that starts their access rather than
Yeah.
But that also costs money to put that system as well.
And I, I but, I and I don't know if they still do it, but I believe when they switched to that system and I'm looking to Kevin, wasn't it like ten dollars for a resident for them to get this, so? Okay. There was, there is no charge, okay. Okay. And it might have been in the beginning to help recover the cost of that reader system. Um and I didn't follow it, obviously, because I wasn't gonna be able to use it, so.
Yeah, and while there will be additional costs for staffing and maybe some of the the minor infrastructure improvements with the gate and such, the concept is that the backend cost of chipping and removing the material largely pay for that, so. Uh or or more, so.
Yeah, it's just unfortunate that I I don't think it's residents abusing it, it's contractors, so. Now we will have to figure that out.
Correct. I think Sergeant Altman's uh filed a report over the weekend too that can attest to the the abuse uh from contractors that do not live in either community, so.
Park a car out there.
Mayor, council, no other updates for me.
Okay, thank you.
More to come on that in the future.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Adra?
Thank you, I have no updates.
Okay. Eight.
No updates, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, Dan?
Mayor, no further updates.
Okay, Ron?
No updates, Mayor.
Okay, Daryl?
Thank you. Um just an update uh for the council, but also for the public that the uh groundbreaking will be tomorrow afternoon at three thirty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Sergeant Altman's.
I was once a well-respected narcotics investigator, now investigating tree trucks being poured into a field.
And you don't find it funny?
Um in in the interest of time, uh the weather definitely changes our traffic behavior, so the number of traffic complaints, park complaints are way up. Uh not necessarily an Atsigo, but my report on kind of the traffic behavior is we had a lot of crashes over the weekend. I think we ended up having like five helicopters over the course of the weekend with injury accidents around the county, so um which is a lot.
Just regarding speed?
It's, and it's, I think each one had its own individual variable to it, whether it's impairment, speed, distracted driving, uh at least in the county, so um we have been busy with car accidents in town. Most of the accidents haven't been the injury accidents, but we have had seen quite a few. Again, the traffic complaints are way up. We got a lot more motorcycles out there. We got a lot more people out and about. Um I think we're generating like two point five types of traffic complaints a day um that are kind of just generic, I shouldn't say generic, but like essentially residents calling in specific locations in the city that they would like us to uh attempt enforcement. So you can do the math real quick of all the different, I mean, of course, of a month, how many different places they'd like us to be at one time, of course, so. That's what I have on that. That's what I have on that. The compost site is currently now on my books.
Sorry, thank you. Did you write him a ticket though if they didn't live in either community?
Oh, you're gonna make me get into it.
Well, I'm kind of curious. I'm curious, I'm curious, but.
There was no citation, as there was no violation and there, I would say to this. For the sheriff's office to assist, we're gonna need to get some sort of ordinance on the board.
Oh, okay, Dan. Albert.
Yeah, no, it has already been mentioned to a city council member for Albertville, Mr. Napstad, so.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have anything? Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, thank you. All right, if no one else has anything, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending.